Uh, is anyone gonna start it?
Sure, why not? Uh...
Can you turn it up?
The Besire City Council Joint Special Committee meeting for Thursday, December 6th, 2018. I'll be calling that order around 6:31. Members here are Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, Dan Weir-Moll, Bruce Trucca, Doug Boat, Andrew Shott. The meeting was moved from its regular time of 6:00 PM to accommodate and like Christmas. Is there any public participation? Anyone? If, uh, yeah, just come up to the podium.
Your option is to do it now, or you can wait until we get into that committee meeting?
When's that gonna be? It's gonna be this evening?
Oh, yeah, it's, it's like the third item on the agenda.
That's fine, I can wait.
Okay. Then we can do the whole discussion all at once.
All right, the order of committee business, first up is the Public Plans and Buildings, and I will call that the order. And 6:02.
6:32.
Or 6:32. Yeah. You can get a clock. Turn around all the time. Okay, uh, property transfer. I suppose the law directors is kinda curious.
I can talk about that for a second. First, I apologize, limiting this communication yesterday and stuff with getting notice out. What had happened was we got backtracked a little bit. We, uh, you guys had previously authorized us to get the CIC set up. We went through the steps, we got all that done, and on Monday of this week, we got our IRS approval for the CIC to exist as a nonprofit. We're gonna talk about that on Tuesday, but then the potential buyers of this, of this piece of property were coming in Wednesday, and we talked about maybe wait until we talk to them, and then talk about it tonight, and what their timeframe is gonna be, and all that sort of stuff. So, I didn't say anything about Tuesday, you know, on Monday, I did send an email to the mayor, and I think to Doug, but, um, but that was while we were waiting to see on Wednesday, they came to town, and they were looking at another property for another potential business as well. So, anyways, the, um, CIC is approved. There is an interested purchaser for the Befrom's trailer park that would like to locate a business there that we talked about previously. We thought originally that they wanted to close before the end of the year, indicated that they have a little bit more leeway than that, they can, they can let it go in the first of the year if they need these, and you don't have to rush, and you can get that through. But they are excited, uh, they're, they have real high hopes of getting that done, and they wanna, they do wanna be ready to kick off as early as possible in the spring. So, the first step in that is to, is for this body, Public Plans and Buildings, to authorize and request legislation and authorize the mayor and, uh, to transfer that piece of property to the CIC, so the CIC can then negotiate a, uh, a final deal with those developers. Yes, sir.
Do we have to do anything with that house?
No, that's part of the deal. They're cleaning up the rest of the lot, demoing the house. My understanding from their tentative plans is, uh, they'll be paving that portion of our alley, uh, because they wanna be able to use that as kind of an interest, so, so they'll be demoing it, regrading everything, and probably pretty much just gonna scrape off a couple feet right off the top to get rid of that, sorry, steep hill that's there, and just make it more accessible. So, they're, they're excited about moving forward, and they were here, and the reason they were here on Wednesday is because they were looking at another piece of property for another potential business, so, um, it's a little, a big group of guys, and they've, uh, it's just, I think they'll have a big impact on our community, I'm sure too.
Mr. Trump? Yes. The utilities, I know we had, we, basically, there were separate utilities for every trailer that was in there, so are those out yet, or is that going to be there which constantly will move those?
That serves responsibility to move all those, and the way it works out there is it all goes into a central pit, and there's a, to the left of that brick building, there's like a little wood outhouse-like building, um, and in that building, in a hole, is water meters. And those water meters go into there, and then they move, they, they, they went to the separate trailers from there. So, and as, you know, there's gas lines, like, there's all kinds of...
Surrounding?
A hodgepodge of, you know...
Those they expanded?
Yeah, because, because of the nature of what was there, and the transient nature of some of the little homes in the early years, at least, um, we don't really know where all lines and all kinds of stuff, so the fact that they're, they're kinda scraping all down, they did a good fresh start, it'll be beneficial for them, especially our water and sewer backs.
Mr. Trump? Does, is there a price on the table? Are we able to discuss that?
We, we had talked about what, uh, what we think would be a fair price, but ultimately that is a decision that CIC will make.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna put in my two cents. Okay, uh, I know we, we said we're gonna do this CIC thing and all that, we got $25,000 in this, and if we didn't get our $25,000 back, that's taxpayer money, shouldn't we get that back?
We will get it back in the form of, it'll be, money's paid to the CIC. CIC will then be able to use those funds for a variety of different functions, um, and what we talked about, originally when we, we were talking about doing it this way is, the, this body sets aside some money every year for acquisition of properties and demo and things like that. Uh, that was a big chunk of those funds, were the funds we used to acquire this property. Those funds, that reimbursement, if you will, now sits with CIC, and CIC will have the ability to do those same kinds of things on their own. So, the funds for another acquisition, or a demo, or something like that on a piece of property that may become necessary in the future, those funds won't have to come from this body, they'd be sent in CIC, with CIC with the ability to do a negotiated deal and, and get it done, maybe a little bit quicker fashion than we did on this one either. So, yeah, you're, you're getting reimbursed, and the funds that you originally appropriated for the purposes of property acquisition and demolition, uh, are getting reimbursed, they're just gonna be controlled from a different entity. Plus them.
Doug? Well, we still have the ability that we wanted to, um, possibly if it generates enough income, um, with some of the housing issues that we're having, did you say that we would be able to, if we wanted to, the CIC possibly give out lower interest loans?
Yeah, you know, some of the things that we, we talked about, we just discussed the CICs in generic terms, um, what some cities have done with theirs, um, and i- is they have created, uh, funding mechanisms to help low-income and owner-occupied structures, and help them with, uh, grants, or, uh, financial assistance, loans, to rebuild, remodel, update, fix property maintenance issues, those sorts of things. So, CIC has, has the ability to do those sorts of things, so to the extent that they may buy a piece of commercial property and put it for a profit, or, uh, they may end up leasing a piece of property and, and generating revenue, uh, and then, those are programs that they can, they can, they can do, they can monitor. Other cities have had some great success with it, downtown facades, and, um, and just owner-occupied structures. That's one of the biggest things we run into with the property maintenance issues right now, is we have some, you know, commercial landlords that have a lot of properties, and there's ongoing issues and bylaws and that sort of thing. But we also have a lot of people, um, that live in their home, and, you know, it's, it's suffered years and years of just not quite having the maintenance it should, and now they find themselves in a, in a pretty deep hole, um, economically, they have a fixed income, but not a lot of revenue coming in, and circumstances have changed on over the years, and, and so they're in a position where they can't fix it. And so those are the ones that, you know, you, you, you know, a man's home is his council, you know, this kind of thing, and you don't wanna, we're not trying to throw people out on the street, but we are trying to improve neighborhoods and overall quality of living and stuff, so anything we can do to help find ways for those, those properties and those individuals to remain in their home, get it out the coast, so that they're living in a safe environment, and not running the risk of fires and carbon dioxide and all those other things, I think is, is important.
Bruce, so it was like a loan program? No, it's not a loan program.
Some, some of them have done that, and looking at them across the state, they've done loans, um, much like the chip grants are, they're, those are loans, and they set them up, and they, and they just pay back over time. Some of them are like cash grants, just ten or 20 percent cash grants, there's a variety of things, but the CIC, once it's up and running, and, you know, they, they're kinda doing, uh, they'll be able to develop those, um, it's set up with an initial five, three directors, like, they can expand, uh, as much as, as they want, um, maybe bring in more directors, they have more people that, we did with just the initial three, just to get it set up, they're going, the additional bylaws provide for about the five directors, which is what most people are doing.
Okay. Anything else?
I make a motion to transfer this property of the McFarland trailer park on East Mansfield to the CIC.
Second, uh...
On in favor?
Aye.
What's your pass? Oh, I guess that's it for us. On the plating committee, I think, uh, I'm, I'm, I don't know, I think I have just a example.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right, an ample piece of legislation, we have it, uh, it just gives you an idea of what it's gonna look like, if, if we get it fixed. Oh, it's out.
I ask the same thing, doesn't make a bad...
It's 6:43, or something?
All right, I call the plating committee to give an order at 6:43. And, uh, proposed zoning changes on East Mansfield. As you see, we had a public hearing, and there were no objections at the public hearing. So, I'll put it up to any questions, Mr. Trump?
I think the first two maps in here show you what is, the current zoning is, and the second one shows you what the proposed zoning is, and of course, this is going from Lexstrom Street headed out, uh, east, including the, uh, property of the, what is the back page, is there?
Wire Assembly.
The old Wire Assembly's building. So, uh, changing it all over to, uh, general business, in order to accommodate, uh, uh, businesses moving into that area, 'cause now some of it's R3 and neighborhood business, and it's just a different, uh, group of businesses that are allowed. The actual, uh, Wire Assembly's building is asking for...
LICs.
LIC, light industrial, commercial, uh, so it makes it, uh, more appropriate as to what is either already there, or what, uh, like the first discussion we had about the, this property, now getting it out of general business and getting it in, or getting it out of the neighborhood, and into a general business thing. So, it has no effect on property taxes of any kind, and, uh, it, anybody wanting to come into town, uh, and do anything in that area, then this is one step that they do not have to take then, to come in and get this rezoned. So, it's already done for this one, the original zoning was done, it was based on what was currently there, and things change over the years, so, uh, that's why now we're trying to look ahead and say, hey, you know, you can make this look a little bit more appealing to somebody that wants to come into town.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I just wanted to say that, reiterate what Madam President was saying, that we had Mr. Buchanan here the day of the hearing, and he had said how there's lots of interest in that building, but because of the fact of the way it's currently zoned, and that's why there's no liar on it, but if we can get it rezoned, there's a good chance that it will be snagged up and used, so...
I'd like to commend Landon Hill for the work he put in, because I think it was very explanatory, it was very educational, uh, the public hearing was, could not do well, and, uh, I would like to go ahead and propose a motion, uh, be prepared to go ahead and request legislation to approve this zoning.
Okay, I have a second, so I have a second. Bruce? Okay, any other questions, discussions, anybody from the public having any input? Before we vote on this?
Is there an LIC adjacent to that, uh, now? Because otherwise, I, I think that would be considered spot zoning, wouldn't it?
Say it again.
Considered spot zoning, just making that the only LIC out there? And if we...
Well, I don't have a match, I'll go a little further.
It's right behind it.
Oh, it isn't adjacent?
Yeah, it, yeah, no.
I didn't know that.
Behind it is LIC.
It's right here, if you wanna come over here and look at it. It's just extending the LIC out to Mansfield Street from where it was, 'cause this would be...
Okay, yeah.
Original, and they're just moving it out to Mansfield Street.
Yeah, I was just, I, I didn't know.
It's making it adjacent to what's already there, uh, just out to Mansfield.
Okay. All right, there's any other questions? All for, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In those votes, aye, aye, motion passed. All right, and I will, just looking down for the hippie. I, the meeting, uh, my report, at 6:48?
6:48, I'll call Health and Safety Committee for order. First item on our agenda is the traffic map changes. Uh, I'll reread the letter dated November 21, addressed to City Besire's Council, Attention Health and Safety Committee, Dear Health and Safety Committee, the City Besire's Traffic Commission would like to recommend an amended, amendment to the traffic control map. Number one, to amend the traffic control map to allow for bike-sliced pedestrian lanes on North Sandusky Avenue, and no parking from Perry Street to the bypass, and to have a single turn lane from Perry Street to Melcher Road. Item number two, to amend the traffic control map to allow for bike-sliced pedestrian lanes on Marion Road from Southern Avenue to Beale Avenue, remove the center turn lane, with turn lanes for southbound traffic from Beale Avenue, with turn lane for northbound traffic at Southern Avenue. Sincerely, Mayor Jeffrey O'Reilly. And then, in the back of your packet, you have the engineering from Branch Center showing the layout of the north, as well as, looks like, the south, and pictures, or, uh, pictures here are of a similar, Mary, Mary and Billy Road, 95 there in Marion. You have something to say, you'd step up to the podium, state your name and address, and what you have to say.
My name is Lisa Alseth, my address is 1323 New Sandusky Avenue. I'm not sure how you guys have engineering drawings and all that stuff, because I just first heard of this two days ago. I live on Sandusky Avenue, I have used on-street parking for the last 13 years, I'm a homeowner, taxpayer, and I have no other options. There is no alley behind my home, my driveway holds two very small cars, which means obviously I need to stay single, because my son drives. My parents cannot come to visit me if there is no parking on the street. The lady across the street from me is handicapped, she pulls into her drive just far enough to reach her sidewalk, therefore, her children cannot come visit her if she does not have on-street parking. Cooper's uses that parking, and there were several comments made that there's maybe only seven or eight cars. I live on that street, that street is full of cars. There's been five accidents in front of my house, the last one was a fatal, they hit a parked car, thank God it wasn't a bicycle. I don't see bicycles, I see walkers, I see people walking out of the industrial park. It's dark, there is no lighting, and they're gonna get hurt. There's an exit ramp there, people are driving very fast, they just did a traffic study, I believe, which is why they raised the speed limit going out to there, and now they wanna add bikes in the mix. It's, it's, it's ignorant. I don't, I'm not suggesting that you don't take any money from the state if that's what you want to fix the road, but a bicycle path, that's not a good spot for it. Um, I'm kinda surprised that more of my neighbors aren't here, but with the two-day notice, I'm sure that there are more people that were probably contacting Mr. Myers.
Which I'll be to in a moment.
There were several people along my street that I did contact, I went door to door. It's very important to me that the people who live, my family, and I have handicapped members in my family, I host family gatherings, um, there's nowhere for them to park. We don't have an alley out back, we, there is nowhere. Emerson Street is adjacent to me, but it is absolutely dangerous to cross Route 4. When I pull into my driveway, coming from the south, going north, and I've stopped to wait for ongoing traffic, I will have three or four cars pass me on the right-hand side. There is a lot of traffic there, and it's not just the industrial park, there's a lot of semis, in the summer, there's a lot of late traffic. There's gonna be accidents. It's, it's just something that I think should be looked at a little deeper as to how many bicycles are actually using that. There's a lot of pedestrians, a lot of people who maybe don't have a driver's license, or don't have the ability to buy a car, are walking in, and walking in the dark, under the underpass, and you can't see them, because that is the way I take to work, and I go to work very early in the morning. So, it's, it's something that needs to be looked into, more than just all of a sudden, two days later, we gotta have a decision in a week. I just found out yesterday. What's that gonna do to my property value? I bought that home assuming that my family could come visit me there, and I'm sure that the other people along that street were under the same impression. There's not a lot of rentals, those are homeowners down through there, so, I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Anybody else that'd like to speak on the matter?
As, uh, as you stated, I did, you know, this was kinda new to us as well, um, we get the letter referred to us from the Traffic Commission, and I've learned a lot in the last day and a half about this, and I'm gonna kinda fill everybody in a little bit of what I've learned. We were provided the application today, and this was, uh, the application for this grant was done in February of 2016, was when the plans were done, you know, prior to, to my time on council, that's when the, the plans were submitted. I kinda started to think how I would feel if somebody says, hey, I'm taking your parking away, and then that was where, what got me, prompted me to bring the letters up, and I, I attached the letter on the door of the, every household, I believe there were 27 houses, uh, that could be affected by this decision. I wanted to know their input, I felt that they deserved to be heard, and, and I wanted to hear their opinion. Again, you're right, it's short news, and I did the best I could, and I got some responses back, and I kinda like to just run through the responses that did get back. Mr. Howell at 1204 North Sandusky, not in favor of the bike lane, and definitely not in favor of losing his on-street parking, he feels there's not enough space for his automobiles in his on-street parking area. Lisa, you stated in your email, as well as a follow-up phone call, you're not in favor of the bike lane, definitely not in favor of losing your on-street parking, not adequate space for your family to park, let alone your visiting family members, some of whom are handicapped. Mr. Miller at 1216 North Sandusky emailed me and said that he's okay with it, has no issue. Mrs. Boland, 921 North Sandusky, not in favor of giving up her on-street parking, because she has a disabled relative that lives with her, and the one parking space she has available off-street is not accessible for a disabled person. Mr. Linder at 811 North Sandusky did not speak for or against the bicycle lanes, however, he did say losing the on-street parking would not negatively affect him. He stated that the road is in such disrepair, in prior hearing, trucks bounced on the bumps and asked that we do whatever is needed to get this project done. I spoke with Debbie Gifford, uh, Representative Cooper's Mill, the owners are out of town and weren't able to comment, uh, but she did say that losing the on-street parking would negatively impact their business, but they do have other off-street parking, and they would make whatever decision we come up with work for them. She did speak highly favorably of the bicycle lanes. So I did call, um, a realtor, Alexa Kamenick, to ask about the property value question, that came to my mind. She stated that the auditor sets the property values, so she wasn't able to answer, other than just given an opinion. She said that a home with no on-street parking could potentially be harder to sell than impossible, so she was really inconsequential, she couldn't tell me much more. So I called the county auditor, asked her about the impact of property values, she informed me she cannot speculate about the property values until after the project happens, and then she sees what happens with sales in that area. She did tell me a story when Don Long was the auditor, that, uh, he was certain that the property values would diminish when US 30 is put in, after it's constructed, the values remain unchanged, so she said she wasn't even willing to give me an opinion what she thought would happen, it's just too, too hard to speculate. So those were the replies that I got. I also received an email from a gentleman who grew up in Besire, she no longer lives here, but he owns a rental property here. He's an avid bicyclist, and he's actually a manager of a bicycle shop in Dublin, and he sent me several articles that, essentially, the Reader's Digest version, it's inconsequential whether the, this is safe or not safe, it's hard to say, from the site line standpoint. Uh, he said his opinion is he feels safer on a bike that is not in marked bicycle lane, because it makes him feel like the traffic's not looking. Um, he said the thing that, as a bicyclist, he would worry about would be cars turning and going in the same direction as he has of turning in front of him. He said that's our highest impact for, for problems there. So those were the, the kind of information that I sought out and, and got here. Uh, I did call and speak with Bruce Branch there today, and I'm gonna ask you to jump in and let me know if I'm incorrect, or you don't understand, because like I said, I'm, I'm learning on the fly here. This was put out, we, we put in for this bid in 2016, it's a 90 percent funded by the state, 1.6 million dollar total, correct? I believe that's what Bruce told me?
Yeah. Okay.
I heard 1.7.
Okay, so in that, in that same neighborhood, if, I ask...
Are there stipulations by the state that there has to be a bicycle path? If they're going to do it, then there has to be a bicycle path, is that the...
Well...
Or can the state just do it?
I can speak to the buffer zone that he informed me about today, was, the state requires 18 inches from the edge of the vehicular traffic to the poles. He said, so if we were to try to do a project like this without the bike lane to be installed, we'd have to either move all the poles back, and I'm not sure if we have enough leeway to get it out, or extend a curve out into the road, thus making the road skinnier, but I don't know about stipulations as far as, you know, to answer that.
So it can't be redone in the, in the manner that it is now? The, the road cannot be done by the state?
No. We're gonna, we're gonna, we got two choices, we either, uh, put a, a bike lane in, um, or we make the street lighter. And then you live on east side of the road, or west, east side of the road, um, and so, you know, we're gonna be coming over, we're gonna have to move all telephone poles and move the curbs too.
To the sidewalks, you're saying?
Yeah, sidewalks will have to be all new, and we'll have to put all new side, actually put all new sidewalks in too, so, that's a regulations from ODOT, so...
And is that covered under that?
No, we have, the city has to pay for that.
So that's why we're wanting to put a bicycle path in, and put the, host everybody on Sandusky Avenue. I just wanted to...
Well, if you're, if you're, you know, if you're losing, if you're losing property, you know, in your yard...
I would rather lose 18 inches of property in my yard, and my son had the ability to park, and my parents, and I'm sure that, I don't know where everybody else is, but I'm sure all those people that are parked down through there, he said there was 27 houses affected, I counted 12 cars yesterday, so that's...
I, I mean, I came...
Half the people using it.
I came through there, I come through there, I live up in that area, there was, afternoon there was zero cars parked, last night at nine o'clock, there were four cars parked, one north of Sandusky, but this morning, there were, I believe, four or five cars parked. I've never seen more than seven cars parked.
I went through there last night and counted 11 cars from the hospital to my home at 7:00, 6:30, 7 o'clock.
Yeah, I was there at nine o'clock, so it was two hours ago, yeah. I understand, there will be some inconvenience.
Yeah, people-
There will be, I know there, there's some inconvenience, but it's not unprecedented. Route, uh, Route 4 North from Land Avenue, excuse me, Gayes Avenue North is, is really the only state route that has, uh, on-street parking. Route Marion Road doesn't, State Far, State, Route 4 South doesn't, 98 South doesn't, 19 and 100 doesn't, Route 98 Plymouth Street has no on-street parking. Um, Hopely Avenue, the only, the only exception to that is right here in this, uh, high-density neighborhood on Walnut Street. Uh, so, you know, because most of those people don't have on-street or off-street parking there, that's the only exception to it. So the city is primarily, in the state routes, does not have on-street parking. You know, so it's, it's not unprecedented. We are trying to, I mean, it's not just about crossroads. It's trying, it's, it's trying to get potential people to, uh, to get, to have a waiting, get, safely get to crossroads too. Um, and it's also, we have started, I think in previous administrations started, um, you know, areas where we've tried to improve bike accessibility through, through town.
But you're not willing to take this all the way down through town? There's, there's parking all the way down through town. Why not take it all the way down through town?
Because it's a business district, you know, there are people parking shot, you know? And, you know, you're not gonna take a bike path, you know, that way.
And I will say, if I could interrupt you, the, the plans for Route 4 South Marion Road also call for a bike lane as well. So it is a connectivity thing, and I will say, the fact that that is the only area-
Really, if I lived on the other side of the street, I probably wouldn't be this upset. There is no alley behind our house.
Everybody who lives on the west side does not have an alley, the east side does.
Right.
That's, that's a point taken.
And I think there's several houses from Franklin Street to, I think it's Bland, that they have nothing but on-street parking. So what are they gonna do?
And, and the point is, you, you mentioned there's been multiple accidents, I think part of that is unfortunate because it is a state route.
Well, the last one was a health issue a gentleman had, but-
Which you could have that on any, whether it's a state or a-
Bicycle or truck, I mean, somebody's gonna die. They're going fast.
Mr. Fankhauser, I saw your hand first.
I just wanna make sure we're 100% accurate here on what was said earlier. Was it said that the state is not going to pave North Sandusky in 2019 if we decide not to do this bike path?
I've not heard that spoken, but-
No, I, I haven't heard it spoken either.
I, 'cause I thought Tuesday when we were talking about this, that they said, we're paving it in 2019, we need to know by December 14th if you want the bike path included in that project or not.
Well, first of all, it's a bike lane, it's not a bike path. It's also, it's, it's not, it's not just, you know, it's, it's a lane also to use for people on scooters that, you know, may, may be handicapped. It's also wheelchairs you could, you would use in those type, electric wheelchairs, and you can use those things. So it's not just about bicycles. It's about safety for some of those things. You see more and more people using those types of things.
So the state's paving it-
ODOT will be, and the only thing that's gonna happen, you'll have to draw new plans. And, you know, that's up to council what they wanna do. You're gonna have to draw new plans, and that's gonna delay the project, and-
And to speak to that, I, I asked Bruce Bransdeter that question today, Kurt, and it was told to me that because the plans were submitted, excuse me, in 2016 that showed the bike lanes, he would have to put new plans in. He doesn't have the time to get them to them by their deadline. So potentially, we would lose this grant, have to reapply for another grant in the future. Is that, is that-
We don't wanna lose this grant, trust me.
And it took us three years to get here.
Correct.
So who decided to put a bike lane in the first place in the initial proposal?
That'd be him, the mayor.
No, this was decided by, uh, the city engineer, and, um, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be the mayor. I didn't, I didn't decide this. It was put it, put the engineering plans, it was through ODOT, since ODOT's paying 80% of it. They just, they decided the plans, and we, we look them over and we approve them. We put it up for public comment, we've had no negative comments on this.
See, where was it put up for public comment?
Even today, even today, I understand your inconvenience, but even after, you know, all the publicity and the, and the people putting cards on, on windshields and, you know, Mr. Chairman, you've got one person here tonight. I, I don't think, I understand there's inconvenience for you, I, I-
It's not just an inconvenience, it's my home. It's my son who parks his car in the road.
What, what, what's-
It's my family.
I understand. What, and where do, where do you live in relation to, like, Dudley or Songer? Can you go right up-
I live across the street from Emerson. Have your grandchild cross North Sandusky.
Well, you live on which, which side of the road?
West Side.
West Side.
I'm on the west side.
Okay.
Next to Rick Bergen.
Okay.
Mr. Foden?
I just wanna read this email that Mr. Bransdeter sent to us today. He sent it to every one of us councilmembers, and in the email, it says, "And after reviewing the application, I forgot that the one reason for adding the bike lane was to adhere to ODOT's requirement that there be an 18-inch safety zone between the outside edge of the travel lane and utility porch."
Right, mayor already spoken that to where we otherwise would've had to move everything, so.
And that would come out of our pocket.
Our pocket, not-
Yes, and we're talking to move that, and we require sidewalks, and you're talking a lot of money.
Several hundred thousand.
Yeah, several hundred thousand dollars to do that. Is there any way that we have anything else that we can offer any of the people up in, uh, in your rural special, on your side?
I don't know, I mean, uh-
Is no alley? Is there room at the back of their properties for an alley to fit in?
Is there somewhere we could meet and see if there's an alley or some kind of access we could put in for you? You know?
I, there's, I mean, we'll go up the land behind my home. The gas station, I think, home, the property behind me, there's about 10 acres of field behind me. But it's not, um, I think it's owned by that gas station.
Okay.
So that, that road could be, some things we could look into.
Here yet, and we're, you know, um, but, you know, if there's some way we could, you know, do something for you individually and get, you know-
It's not gonna be just me, and there's gonna be other people, there's no alley.
If there's a possibility to put an alley back there, your neighbors, you was one primarily you're talking about, right? Mr. Bergen has their own parking.
Mr. Bergen has his own parking. He has a garage, he has to use a business for their driveway. I think it's a shared bike access. I, I don't know what his arrangement is with that business, but he pulls into Rich Tim Restorations and then into his garage.
Mr. Warble?
Oh, I, I just wanted to comment. You said you weren't here in 2016, I was. And I do remember asking, don't you think we need to go down and ask the people if we're gonna take their parking away? And I'm, I'm just a little bit discouraged, I guess, that, that these people didn't know about this.
I've been there 13 years. I've been there 13 years now.
We were posted for public comment on other websites.
On Facebook.
I'd like to, I'd like to say to the future mayor, if we could send letters, I would appreciate that. I, I think that would be, would make us better neighbors too. So if we could do that, I'd appreciate it.
I, I think a bike path's good for, to get those people, or to get people out there, uh, but I, I don't know about taking the parking away, uh, so.
Does it have to be on all sides of the street? I mean, the industrial park is on one side of the road. The other side of the street for me has an alley and rear access to all their parking. I don't have that.
And I did ask Mr. Bransdeter today if, once these plans are submitted, if we could make some changes, and he said, maybe. I don't know what that means, but I asked, and, and it wasn't a no, so. Mr. Stoker?
So do I understand this right, that if the bike lane is marked off on the street, that, that satisfies the state that the curb and poles do not have to be set back then?
Correct. We could work with the existing curb line and the existing poles with no movement needed in those. And that was the reason that this plan was chosen back in 16. Where was it? Kurt?
How has that road been able to be remilled and paved before without moving the poles back?
I can't answer that. That would be a question for the engineers.
Have they changed the limits here in the last several years?
You have to pose that to ODOT or to Mr. Bransdeter. I honestly, I, I don't know how to answer that.
Well, this has been in the plans for two years, it dates back to 2016. The, everybody affected should've had a letter mailed by the city back in 2016. Whenever we make major changes in neighborhoods like zoning, the city always mails a letter to every affected property and the properties around it.
While I don't disagree with that statement, we're here now, you know, and-
With the one-week deadline.
Well, I, I am upset that the gentleman behind you is suggesting that he's put it out on the media or out on the face- I'm, I work, I don't hover on Facebook or check your media sites. I don't really, I trust that the people who have been elected to do their job would be considerate of my family and my home, and if something that major were gonna change, I would be contacted.
Just looking at a Google map, there seems to be plenty of area behind there, Mr. Chairman, behind those houses. Um, that we could, you know, um, you know, we're possibly putting an alley back in there for access, I, I, you know, I can't promise it tonight, but I, it seems like there's plenty of area. Mr. Shaw, I'm sorry.
I have one more question.
Mr. Shaw, your comment?
Yeah, I was gonna, related to the potential for an alley behind that area. Is that something the law director or the CIC could address with that business to see if there's that ability to acquire some property value?
It would be more, uh, it would be more the city issue, um, uh, streets, um, public lands. I don't know what, you'd have to look at what's owned by who. Um, there's a lot of access there.
It depends on our map too. There may be already a vacant alley.
Yeah, you, we have a lot, we have a lot of alleys in the city that are grass and trees. Um, and I don't, and Google Maps doesn't tell me, that's what the GIS map, too, because you have too hard to do on the phone. But we, but there's, I mean, there's a lot of land back there. I mean, there's a lot of places in alley, in access alley if you go, that, you know, you'd have to look at the GIS map.
And what's, what would be the timeline to, to even find out if that's gonna be a remote possibility? Do we have till the 14th to decide this? We already have a meeting scheduled for the 13th. We could have this committee meet again on the 13th, and we take no decision tonight. I would like to, to, is that something that you think we can at least understand the possibility of that, or that? Law director, I mean, what do you?
Well, I, I could go to a real computer, to the printer, and, and look at the GIS map and see what it looks like there.
I think-
It'll take me 15 minutes.
I think that would give us, you know, even if we waited to, to come up with a final decision, and so, whether it be on the 13th or earlier in the week next week, to, to allow us to properly research that. And, and I know you have a question, I'm gonna get to you, but let me ask you a question first.
I, I still, I'm still following up, if I can still recognize thing. Um, there was another question brought up about the lighting issue down North Sandusky. With this change, are there any planned changes to add additional lighting? Or are we looking at changing the streetlight situation down there all with this project?
What, what lighting issues are up there?
Well, she brought up the, she brought up the question of, it's, it's darker on North Sandusky. I'm just, I'm wondering if there's any change-
I didn't notice it being darker. We haven't, never had a comment about it being darker, like.
Okay.
We can, we can, we can look at it, too, and see it is darker.
Lighting, it is dark, and if you're going to have a bike path to the industrial park, you must certainly need to have some form of lighting so that drivers are aware that there are bicycles out there at night, because you have people turning to get on exit ramps. They're coming out from underneath that, um, overpass. It's completely pitchforked.
Are you talking about north out by the overpass, okay.
Yeah.
But you, you mean down by your house as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's-
I most definitely think it's very, very-
I have a pole light that I've put in my yard to intimidate people that want to pass.
I know there's areas of this that are well-lit, and there's others that probably aren't as well-lit. I just didn't know if we had, if it was baked into the plan at all at this point.
Nothing on that.
Okay. It might be worth-
Is there the availability to put a bike path or sidewalk, whatever you wanna call it, on the opposite side of where I live out to the industrial park? I don't, I'm, I guess what I'm saying is if it's to get people to work, they work on that side of the road. And really, there is only about three or four cars that park on that side of the road, and they have rear access alley. My side of the road is the people that use it, because we don't have alleys and we don't have rear access.
This particular project only goes up to the bypass. So to go further would be another project on our own at a later time.
So this has absolutely nothing to do with the bike path to the industrial park?
Not at this moment, no, this not. So-
It's the beginning for it.
Yeah.
I, I thought it was a little-
Mr. Chairman?
Sir? I, I really think we need to have a little bit more time to hash this. I'm not gonna make a decision tonight. If we do, I, I can't, I can't make a decision till I, we talk again with more information to get-
I think more homeowners need to be involved. I really do.
And that's the other part. I need, I believe we need more information and a little bit more-
I understand that you want to bring people and industry to this town, but I would certainly wanna think that you would want to keep the ones that have jobs and pay their taxes here.
Yes. If I could dispose a question to you, and you may not even have an answer for this, at this moment, but if you had, if we were able to create an alley behind your residence, would you feel differently about this plan?
I really worry about people dying on that road. I am not kidding.
But I mean, as far as how you feel-
I've seen a body in six months. I don't know what else to say, other than I can see the damage because of the speeds that people are driving there. I cannot imagine that this is in anyone's mind a good idea if they would just go sit in my living room and watch out that window at how fast people drive.
I felt that way initially until, uh, speaking with, with Mr. Bransdeter. He started telling me all the various places that have done this, and it seems to be the trend in many communities.
How many people did you see riding their bike on Marion Road?
I don't spend a lot of time over this, is what I'm going to do.
Part of the reason we're not seeing that bike traffic now is it isn't safe currently.
It isn't.
It really isn't safe currently. I don't know if the bike path is gonna, uh, make that 100% safe. I mean, there's no guarantees when you're riding a bicycle down the side of the road or on a bike path. Uh, we can't guarantee anybody's safety. And I, you know, I know there, we need, you know, I wish we had more input, I wish we had, uh, given more time to be able to give input on this.
But there was time. This was done in 2016. I mean, there was lots of time.
I understand, I understand what you're saying. I do think though, based on where we're at with this project, with the potential to lose this grant, it was, we're, we're looking at a, over $1.4 million of state money funded this project, and we do not wanna miss out on that. So that's a big consideration, and I think, you know, there's, if there's some things that need to be done to put a little extra money into this project from other areas to get some additional parking for some folks. We may have to make some, make some moves to do those things, uh, from a sense.
I'm anxious to hear if that's something you can at least consider, so I'll look forward to, just note that.
Just, oh, a comment about the, um, the safety of it. Uh, I do a lot of driving in Columbus. My grandkids were down there, so I'm down there. Rome Hilliard Road, uh, Rome Hilliard Road is-
Busy.
45 miles an hour, and there are bike lanes down both sides of it, and there are bikes there all the time. And, uh, my son, uh, I mean, they're used to driving down there with, with that. You see them all over the city of Columbus itself, downtown, uh, they're there. And, uh, this is one of the things that a lot of people in the younger generation are looking for, because they want the ability to be able to get out and do the outdoor things, and be in a place that's, a way that is designated for them. And, uh, I see it, you know, especially on the Route, the Route 4 South project. Uh, if people aren't gonna be walking sideways down somebody's front yard to get out there, it would be a walking and a bike path. Then it would be such a boon to that area. We, we know that that, that's something that is needed out there. And, um, the, uh, I, I can understand where you're coming from, Lisa. Uh, that, uh, and that is a tragic thing that happened there at, at your home. That is, that is something that, uh-
Five accidents.
Uh, I know, there's been five. And the, that most difficult one for you, I know, that, that's not easy to, to even get out of your mind. But, uh, the, uh, we get pushed by ODOT, and, uh- that's not easy to, to even get out of your mind, but the, we get pushed by ODOT, and we thought that this project was something that wasn't, we were looking at February, March, and we were as surprised as anyone when we get this December the fourteenth date of, suddenly they won all this, and went, went these things in place. So, we got caught, same way that, that a lot of people did, with not realizing that this was coming here, because generally, we get more noticed than that, that it's, that it needs to be done in a week and a half.
But it is their money.
Yes.
They can, they make the rules, they're paying eighty percent of the project, it's ninety percent of the project, and it's, I mean, we're kind of, you know, we've got some tough decisions to make, and hopefully, the safety issue is, is a concern everywhere, wherever you, wherever you have traffic, wherever you have automobiles or cars, excuse me, or bikes or trucks interacting, small cities, big cities, there's risk, and like a man of presidents said, you know, there's, it's something, we're not, we're not cutting edge here on bike lanes. I just, like I said, I mentioned the other night at the council, that I just got back from Chicago, they're, big, busy streets, side streets, residential streets have bike lanes in Chicago, and they go fast, and they have what's called ditty bikes, you know, there's bike racks everywhere, you're ready, you put a, your ten bucks in it, and you take a bike, there are bikes everywhere, and bikes exist alongside delivery trucks and just about every, and high rates of speed, and, you know, they exist, and we always have potential, and, and it's sad that there is, and, but, you know, that's no reason to keep us from having bike lanes, there's greater, the greater, the greater good, you know, heaven forbid we never have an accident, but the greater good, you know, it's, it's the same way with, with automobiles, when automobiles came in, there's a lot more people died in transportation, and until they kind of figured that out, you know, to make them safer and to make people drive better, so, we'd have to educate bikers and, and, you know, do better lighting like you suggested, there's all things, things that we can do.
Is, is there a possibility of contacting the state and telling them that, that we need more time, especially since they tend to give us such a short time?
I asked Mr. Brant to enter that question today, and I was told no.
No.
Their deadline is a hard deadline. Mr. Brant, Senator.
Thank you, Steve.
I'm pretty sure Tuesday night, I'm gonna have to go back to the video and look, but it was said that the state was still gonna do that project as far as paving all of North Sandusky, is even if we chose not to do the bike path, or bike lane, I'm sorry, bike lane, so, I'd like to get a firm answer from the state of, are, are you still gonna do the paving of that street in 2019 if we don't go with a bike lane on it?
I asked Mr. Brant to enter that question today, his answer to me was, yes, the state will still be responsible for the roadway, but they usually plan their projects a couple years ahead of time, so we felt that, yes, they would still feel the need to take responsibility to, to fix the road, but it would not be next year, or potentially not two to five years.
Okay, so, the only reason we're having this discussion tonight is that we had this sprung onto us by the state here sometime in, was it the last week and a half?
I don't know what date we received the notice that they needed our paperwork back by the fourteenth.
And you guys said that you thought we had until March or something to make this decision, so, at what point were you actually going to contact the people up on North Sandusky directly and say, hey, what do you think about losing your parking? You know, it, it doesn't look like you ever were gonna contact them, other than a Facebook post.
And that, I'd have to defer that question to the administration, that's not a function of council.
Well, I, I think that, you know, biking is a seasonal activity, I don't think we're gonna see many, if any, in the winter, so we're gonna, for a seasonal activity, affect people's lives every day on that stretch of road that live there. Why should those people have to give up their livelihood, being able to park out in front of their house, for a seasonal activity? That, that's gonna affect those people every single day.
I hear you, and that's why I reached out, and I wanted them to, to be able to hear. Mr. Fode, you have your hand?
Nope.
Somebody else did, was it you that didn't have your hand?
Yeah, it was. There's no pointing.
Okay. Any other? Lisa.
I would like to mention, too, that there are bike paths in other communities that ride from one town to another, Belleville, for instance, Mansfield, those bike paths are in private, offset, non-populated with roadway, do they cross a road? From time to time, yes.
Two, two different things, a bike path and bike lane, this is the bike lane as part of this road project, which is different from a bike path, which is something else.
But you're saying it's for exercise, that that's why we're putting it in, earlier you said it was for the industrial park, but then you changed that, I'm just wondering what the purpose is. I get that it's to get free money from the state, I get that, but when you take free things, sometimes you give up things, I also understand that.
Absolutely.
But you're not giving up anything, because it's not affecting any of you, it's affecting me and twenty-seven other homeowners, and I think that everyone should have had the opportunity to have been able to sit down and discuss it.
I don't disagree with you.
Any other comments?
I still think we need to have another meeting before we make a decision.
I would agree with you, making a decision. Bruce, how do you feel about that? You wanna wait?
No, I, I would prefer to wait, I, I received quite a few people, phone calls, I actually talked to people down on Sandusky Street, and the thing is, is that people that I had talked to had alternative ideas instead of, they, they had a lot of alternative routes is what they, was what the suggestions were made to me, but nothing so much as, you know, they, they did ask about the businesses that were on Cooper's Mill, what impact that was gonna be, you know, I, I see that you had, got a hold of Cooper's Mill, and, but, you know, they, they offered me plenty of suggestions of other alternative routes, that's, that's where they went with it. There was only one person that asked me what impact would it have on the parking on the side streets, and I had no, no answer, really.
You okay to wait?
Well, we can wait, but I will say, I mean, and then, and I'm not thrilled with the communication process as well, but if this project for North Sandusky gets delayed another two years, that would be the real problem here, and this is a lot of money that is being put down by the state, that may not be back for another couple of years, and it may not be back in the same amounts, I don't, I don't think we want to take that risk, so, as unfortunate as some of these, some of these circumstances are, there's gonna have, there's, there's going to be problems with that project, but North Sandusky needs to be taken care of, that, that street is in dire need.
So does Berry Road.
And, I'm sorry, but it, it should be taken care of, and I think some of the suggestions tonight, and some things, you know, can be looked at to try and help the loss of parking, but I'm in, I'm, you know, kind of the camp of, we gotta take care of North Sandusky and get that project taken care of, one way or another, and we can't put this off for another two years, so.
We, we can only put this off in about another.
We can put this off until December fourteenth.
Yeah.
And, and no longer.
Prior to the thirteenth.
Right, prior to thirteen.
So.
Just give, give her a bite of peace of mind, that, you know, let them have their say, I mean, I, I don't see the project gal, but neither.
I agree.
But at least, at least give them a say.
I'm the same way.
Let them take their mind.
I think that if we do this, have another meeting, and try to get the others to come, and maybe we come up with other alternatives, as in possible alley, as he was able to pull up where that property is, that there could be a possibility to help with those parking, let alone we have to look at the others between Gias and Irving, so, I think that could help us by, if we can come up with some alternatives, possible alternatives, if we don't have an answer, we can't say it's gonna be done until we do more investigation, but we may have some better ideas.
When, when would this project be started?
Fiscal year 2019 for ODOT begins July first, so, sometime after July first, so we have, we would have, you know, after the legislation would be potentially passed, we would have, you know, till six to eight months probably in that to have a solution for you.
For the committee members, any preference, I think either Tuesday or Wednesday would be, give us time to let the residents, and we're gonna meet one last time, and I told him I'd get to him, I wanna set a meeting date here.
I'd take the time, well, I'm available anytime after.
I mean, it could be Monday, but I wouldn't give you, Mr. Rattler, time to.
I'd take Wednesday.
How are you gonna contact residents?
Same way I contacted you.
Wednesday, I'd say, if that's all right.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
What makes you think, 'cause you, you contacted residents, come tonight, one person showed up?
I just wanna give them the voice, that's all I want. We're still gonna have to make a decision.
But, but the voice was coming tonight, what makes, what makes you think more people are gonna come?
Whether one or all twenty-seven come, I, they.
And, and the other thing, too, the people you solicited, from, from what you said, seem to be like pretty much fifty-fifty.
The ones that returned my call were exactly fifty-fifty.
So you called everybody, returned the call, and you, and by a number, you had one person show up, correct?
I'm just saying, we have to address this, I'm gonna let them know when.
But wasn't tonight the time to address this?
Yeah.
Okay, and it got, I mean, it got addressed, I mean, you know, have, have, have another meeting, but I, I, you know, I think, wasn't tonight the night to, you know, ha- hear this out?
I'll leave that up to the committee, that would be where motion would come from.
I'd make it through to Wednesday. That's my opinion, I, I'd rather have the meeting Wednesday for some more information on possibilities of possible alternatives, or they all three, I think, same up against it.
I think the committee consensus is we're gonna have another meeting, so let's wrap it, wrap this one up and figure out a date.
Tuesday or Wednesday.
Wednesday's good.
Wednesday, Wednesday's good?
Yeah.
Seven p.m., six p.m., you guys tell me.
Whatever works, whatever you think would work.
Six, six o'clock, on Wednesday.
We'll make sure that all the media are notified, we're both here right now, hearing the results, and, and we'll send our usual notifications to you, though.
But six p.m. Wednesday?
Six p.m. Wednesday for health and safety. The second item on our agenda is the liquor permit renewals, as we spoke about a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Rattler, we spoke with his opinion, and we have to decide whether we want to object or anything, or is it a pass. I move the opinion that letting it pass is acceptable at this point, messages out there.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Do I have a motion, or do we need a motion? Should not do anything, I think we do.
We need a motion that we want to file anything, and then that will also then be brought to full counsel.
Okay.
For counsel to vote on it as a whole.
Any motions or not?
I move not to.
Mr. Trupkin, first, a second?
Second.
Mr. Shaw, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both saying, my motion carries. With that, I'll wrap up, health and safety at seven thirty-five.
Okay, anyone here that doesn't want to stick, stick around for the rest of the meeting, you're more than welcome to leave, we don't have any issue about that, if you want to.
I know what we came for.
Thank you.
I guess I got fired, if you're in charge. Seven thirty-five, I'll be fired after the order, first up, year-end financial adjustments.
Okay, in your packet.
Do this every year.
Yeah, in your packet are appropriations, reductions, and, and what?
Appropriations, reductions in advance.
Okay.
Did you talk to Joyce about it? I did, Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Yes?
Joyce can't be here this evening, she's otherwise engaged, but we spoke about the advances, this is not the expenditure of new money with the filtration plan or the others, basically this is a bookkeeping maneuver to put the, the money in the appropriate place for the end of the year, to pass the approval of the state auditor, then at the end of the new year, it'll go back to most likely where it came from.
That's the third page where the advances are.
Appropriations, reductions are pretty self-sympathetic.
Yeah, so we need three separate pieces of legislation for these, so, one at a time.
First, do I have a motion for the appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Then, do I have a motion for the appropriation reductions?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. And, do I have a motion for the, what was it?
Advances. So, so moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. All right, that was just, that's like doing your checkbook, you know, at the end of the year, or at the end of the month, you, okay, I need that, I'm short two cents here, I need to give it over, phone to check in here, whatever, okay. Next is the 2019 budget, well, three of, three of you weren't here for most of this, most of this repetitious, I don't know.
Could we start with this page?
Yeah, let's start with this page.
Okay, yeah, the single page, looks like this.
Single page, so.
The year-end balances and projected revenues for 2019, this is as of December third, so, the first column you'll see are the, all, all the basic funds that we have in the city, from the general fund to the income tax fund, the safety forces, to street CMR, swimming pool, on down with solid waste, sewage disposal. The second one is the estimated year-end balance, this is how much money that the auditor is saying she sees is going to be in those funds at the end of this year. The next column is the anticipated revenue for 2019, you see what those numbers are, and then how much money then is available for the budget in the next column, and then you see the, what the budget, and the budget are, are these blue sheets that each of you should have, and you will see with what the budget is for each one of these funds, and what we're anticipating the balance will be in each of these funds at the end of the year. Now, when you look at these, some of these numbers, especially that last one, why is it going to have that big a balance in it at the end of the year, and the stormwater utility, but those are projects that are going to probably be carrying over into the next year, we've got the money, but it, it will be used in the following year, because we budget, actually, for more than one year in advance when we're doing some of these big projects. So, that's what this sheet is all about, and that's the reason why this is all being given to you this evening, is that you have the opportunity to review this, and before any, any kind of a vote is taken on the, is taken on it, so, the, in the packet, you have these sheets that start with each of the different areas in the budget, and from, going from the police, police department, through fire department, through all the different departments, you see what the 2018 budget is right now, what the 2019 budget is going to be, whether there's an increase or a decrease in it. The items that you see highlighted, and you'll see usually a little note down at the bottom, like we're looking at that one for outside contracts, for the fire department, you see that that fifty-five thousand dollar budget item includes an eight thousand dollar boat that they need. Dropping down to the next line, that, in the airport, the twenty-one thousand, two hundred dollars also includes a mower, that's when, we tried to mark out the bigger items, and the effect that they had on each one of the items that. one of the items that's in the budget. So we know we have that F/A-8 ran for 19, well, for this year, you know, for 18, it's still sitting there, they haven't done the runway yet, so that's going to be probably carrying over into next year. We get over to lands and buildings improvements, we have air handlers here at City Hall that need fixed, $49,000 for that, coils for the same thing, and pumps, the interfruits for those pumps. The VT parking lot needs to be done, the park wall down at Giants Park needs its final coat put on it, and the BNT building back behind us needs roof work done. So this gives you a look at a lot of these items as to, you know, where they were last year, and how much the, if there is any increase. Bottom of page two, under traffic lights, that intersection during the deal, those posts that have been holding it up, they aren't working, so it's going to cost us some money to get that fixed up, fixed up correctly. So the engineering line, and then also the actual maintenance line, so there's like $200,000 in there to get that done, those are expensive to put up those metal arms, when you have that big of an expanse.
Expensive, this page four. Expensive, this page four.
I know.
The cost of a high dive.
Yeah, what you're looking at.
I know, I was just, I've already looked through it all, and you mentioned about price of things, and I'm like, you know, even page four, a high dive costs that much, like 40 hours?
Yeah. On page three, you've got our street improvements, what our projects are for next year. We always spend around $600,000 a year on our non-paint projects. We're going to be doing the Arrowhead Drive parts, part of it, is going to be our OPWC project for the year, about $230,000. You see the money we have in here for State Route Four North, the $400,000, State Route Four South, $170,000, and some bridge repairs that need to be looked into, that are going to be an additional $25,000. And then engineering costs for all of those.
We're only going to vote on this on our final council.
Council meeting.
Final council meeting of the year.
Yes, next council meeting, yeah. And if there are, if there are a lot of questions that we have, we will get together prior to that, and we can go over it. So if, as you get the opportunity to go through all of this, you've got both the income, that's what the two pieces are here of the blue, one's income, the other one's expenses. So you have both sides of where each one of those funds will be, and then you have that wrap-up sheet that we talked about earlier, that shows us what our carryover is, and what the expenses are going to be in, in different areas. You see our part of the park, bike path construction out, out to park is going to be about $12,000. Yeah, that high diving board, page four. Though we did, the service director did go out there, and we found some really nice couple lifeguard stands out there that are considerably less cost than what we had originally anticipated they were going to be. You see down there, we have cleaning the lagoons, that's going to be $100,000, they have cleaned every.
Every year.
Every year, is it, Mr. Mayor?
Every year.
Every year. And we have $20,000 in here for the UV lamps that have to be replaced every year. We're just looking for the big dollar items, okay? Distribution, there's $64,000 in there, part of it is for, we did a leak, we did a leak detection. We did it, and they decided that it really pointed out, so.
Yeah, we, we caused one very large leak.
Yes, and so going to be doing it yearly if we can, yes.
Good idea.
And we have some directional boring that needs to be done, and GIS mapping, and there are always water lines that need to, we need to work out. In the sewage disposal plant, they need UV lamps, before we can send the water back into the river, they have to, that a water has to be treated.
Cristine like clean.
Cristine like clean, are the words that they used, there at the bottom of page five,
Well, I'd like to point out that too, I mean, there was $70,000 we put in last year for that, that was carried over.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Because, I guess, either they never got around to it, or they're just never going to. And the plan all along was last year to do one set, and do another set this year, so hopefully that's all done, need for that.
On page six, on simmers and drains, you'll see that this is all part of our.
Stormwater separation.
Stormwater separation project, the group one sewers, the East Mansfield and West Stone area, the group two sewers, and the group three sewers, so each of them has a price of, group one sewers is about $1,015,000, Mansfield area, that's $356,000, the group two sewers is $915,000, and the group three sewers are $1,001,190,000. So.
That would be part of the low, zero interest loan.
Okay.
Unless it's not coming directly out of revenue, so. So I'll clarify that.
And then below that, you have the engineering costs for all that. You see in there, we've got nine dumpsters in the, in the budget, get some dumpsters that we're going to be advertising, and hopefully getting out into the community, we can, we can generate some income from that. As far as stormwaters concerned, State Route Four North construction, we have $5,000 for that project in here, and engineering costs. So that's a real synopsis of what we're looking at. Any questions?
I, yeah, question.
I noticed that there was nothing in the budget for, for a new roof on the fire station at the bottom of the hospital.
That's in there.
Is it?
It's in this year's budget, yeah, it's in this year.
He responded to 18.
On 2018.
Yeah, he still had money left over for this year.
Okay.
Mr. Rattler.
We won't get on this year yet, but we have another guy, Kim Tadde, that gives us an estimate on that, but we're going to get one more estimate, and hopefully get it done as weather breaks.
So it'll be for the money that we already have.
Yeah, it'll be in covered for 2019.
So I would just like, since Andrew and Kevin were there, and I, I just, what did you think? Your impression of, you know, we sat through all that budget, and the, yeah, the pros or costs, to let the other members know.
I think the process went pretty smoothly this year, I mean, there was a lot of information, and, you know, overall, I think I was pretty satisfied with how the process went, and where the budget sits at the moment. I do think it'd be worth taking a moment to, maybe Mr. Mayor, talk about the Tree City budget, because I know there's been some.
Tree City is not the proper term.
Tree City.
Tree maintenance, tree maintenance.
Sorry. But I know that that has been brought up as a, you know, that we're spending money on that, and it shouldn't be, but I think it's a worthwhile thing to have in place, and that it's not a big expenditure, it's something that we have money set aside in that, for a reason anyway, for other projects involving trees around the city, we're not spending additional new money to pay a membership fee, or something along those lines. Other comments, Kevin?
You had the opportunity to speak with all of the.
Yeah, I had, yeah, when the permits come in. Last year, I came in and watched from the sideline in anticipation of coming on to council, and saw a lot of difficulty in getting through the budget, and I was pleasantly pleased and surprised this year, it was, it was a very easy process, the departments were very informative, we worked all the group together, and got to the bottom of it with ease, and I was very, very pleased with the whole process.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, this is either my fourth budget or so, fourth or fifth, and it's one thing that impressed me coming from the business world here, how, how the budget is taking it very seriously, you know, parameters are set, the budget is stuck to, there's not money wasted, I mean, it's not, people don't come in at the end of the year and, you know, it's in the budget, let's spend it, and we're, we watch tax revenue very closely, and, you know, there's things that we need, and the council members have good questions, and sometimes things are, you know, have to be defended, and if they're not defended well enough, they're taking on the budget, and, you know, it's, it's a, I don't know, we have three or four meetings.
One, hold up.
Yeah, four meetings, so it's, taxpayers can be rest safe that, if council members and administration doesn't waste their tax dollars, we take it very seriously. That's all I have to say.
I was going to comment, there are some items in here that are contingent upon grants, and, you know, we're held to the grant cycles for this, some of them are April, some of them are July, and if some of those don't come through, then we, I think, can discuss what the minimum requirement would be, and you'll go the grant route again, trying to keep, keep active in that, that any monies that are, that are out there and available for these items, we're certainly going to see that we can get it, and if we can't get it, then we review it again and say, okay, then we can't do it this year, this is not the year for that to be done. So the, I thought the cycle went really well, there was really good interaction with, especially the department heads that came in, I mean, they were, some of them, they knew that those few things weren't going to fly, no, you don't need, really need that this year, you know, that as far as vehicles are concerned, you know, we've got, we've got a lot of really old vehicles, we're catching up with it, but we're not spending money just to spend money, we're, we're saying, you know, if you're not going to use it that much, then you don't need Cadillac to do it with, and you don't need Cadillac, period. Let's go with.
There's no, this, wait, there's no Cadillac.
No Cadillac, no Cadillac.
Just for council members.
Okay.
Don't get that started.
Yeah, don't get that started.
No, I just want to say, for the most part, you know, it is what it is, I mean, I, you know, everyone has their own ideas, I just think, you know, I really think we should look hard, and I guess I'm telling the mayor this, for next year, or whatever, really look hard where we can save money, and where we can keep those utility bills down, you know, I think that's the biggest thing we've got going right now, and whatever we can do to bring those down, is my, is my biggest concern, you know, and I, I know we needed some things there in those departments, and, but. We got, Mr. Chairman, we got the double whammy of needing a new water plant, and a water treatment plant, and EPA at the same time. The good news is, I think, I think we're, I think we're making a lot of progress on storm separation, and, you know, and we're going to be taking readings on that, it overflows here, we have to do that part of the plan, and I think, I think we'll do very well on that, which, the whole thing on the EPA is to reduce the overflows, to get them under 10 a year. So I, I think if that is the case, you know, we can really look at that with the EPA here in the next cycle. As far as for the water plant, we've already made, or will be making our third payment, so, 40 payments, so we're almost 10% of the way paid off. The good news is, it came in under budget, the city residents are going to save over the course of the loan, over the proposed, when it was going to be built, and when it got built, about, almost, pretty close to $13 million. That's an exceptional savings on the water plant, there's pain now, you know, the rates went up, but some of that is, was just, I think, a lack of planning, a lack of foresight from the year of 2000 on, let's say, of knowing that we're going to need this plant, they'll start putting some money away for it, and that came along too late, so the current residents, including myself, I just got my water built, my place of business, it doubled. It didn't, it didn't double because of the city, it doubled because the toilet was running, so, so, so you got to be very, water is precious, you know, we're still, it's about a penny and a half a gallon.
Utility bill.
I'm sorry, you know, I said, that's, that's fair to me.
Rattler did it to me for the first four months I was on council, I'd walk in.
So it's pipeline, it's tree maintenance, and it's utility bill, and I'll get you. All right, thanks, Mr. Chairman.
I was just, I was, I just thought that Kevin DeDray, he's so frugal on everything at the airport, that I was hoping maybe to see that maybe we could have included a little bit for him for building maintenance out there on his, his main office, and, and he had expressed interest in one of our meetings about having some type of automatic fueling system installed. I was just curious, did he speak to any of those?
No, he didn't bring any of those up in the budget proposals. The unfortunate thing, it's, it's run by grants, you know, all the prepared improvements, I'll bring it up to him, and there might be a grant out there for that, he didn't say anything to us about, about getting back with him.
He makes every tiny stretch, that time's over.
Yeah, he's a great guy. And all our department, we have no complaints about any of our department heads, they're all very diligent, frugal.
So I think what we're looking at is, you get time, if you want to, if any of you want to sit down individually and go through this, we can do that with the service director, the mayor, or anything, if you want to do it as a group, we can have another meeting, a special finance committee meeting between now and the next council meeting, to do that. I think any, either one of those ideas work, but we're coming down to the, you know, part of work's been put in the last couple of months to get where we are, there may still be changes that need, that need to be made, and see where we're going to stand with those.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, we're open, if you want to make, if you prefer to meet with us one-on-one, that's fine too, so just let us know. Even Saturday, if that works, that's one of the things we can do.
Okay, so, I guess just let us know, so, we will end the finance committee at 8:00. And any public participation?
Yes, I, I'm. What does that handle, about a second?
Who's that? Two things, if we're going to pass the budget, legislative.
Two things. If we're going to pass the budget legislation on the 18th, the regular meeting, that's the last one of the year, we will need a special finance meeting after, after tonight because we don't have motion for the legislation.
Okay.
That's one. Two, on the special health and safety meeting. As Mr. Myers mentioned, if there is to be legislation, that is a hard deadline business day on Friday, the 15th. If we have a special health and safety meeting Wednesday evening, that will not be enough time for us to have a special council meeting on the 30th, on Thursday evening. I need 24 hours notice at least to get notice to the media. We would then have to have a special council meeting Wednesday after the, after the health and safety meeting. If there is to be legislation, we can have a draft that is routine, traffic have changed legislation if there is to be legislation. But if we're going to do that, we need to have a special council meeting before Thursday. It would have to be Wednesday, conceivably after the committee meeting. Otherwise, there wouldn't be 24 hours notice to meet, notify the media, and we're probably do that.
Would that be easier or would moving us back to Tuesday be easier? Does it not change anything for you?
Just be as good as all of it.
Okay.
Just do Wednesday, just have it right after.
Do we want to schedule a special finance meeting?
Okay.
We, we should be back by Tuesday.
Okay, I'll reconsider Tuesday.
It doesn't matter, I mean, but it's what...
Oh, you should be back. Oh, okay. I know what you're talking about. So you mean Tuesday?
Yes, we're on Tuesday.
Have I gotten over? Tuesday at 6:00 for health and safety. And then still need a special...
Well, then depending on what happens in a meeting, we can have a special council meeting. We have a public hearing Thursday evening at 7:00 on the veterinary issue. We can have a special council meeting right after that. That was discussed intentively on Tuesday. But we can't, I can't announce it until we have a need for it. And we don't have a special request until we got a committee meeting, so.
So if we have health and safety on Tuesday and special council on Thursday, is that everybody have had everything that's happened?
We still need a finance committee meeting in here sometime.
We'll do it.
With the budget. So we could do it Tuesday evening?
Either or.
Yeah. I mean, we've got the rest of the week to do that one, but why come in twice?
Correct.
I mean, we're going to have...
Or do it on Thursday.
We could do it Thursday while we're here, have the finance committee meeting that night, and then it would be there and available for Tuesday's legislation.
Well, the legislation will be available until the 18th.
Right. Yeah. But we could do it on the 18th then for full council. Okay. So that's what we'll do.
So health and safety on Monday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
At 6:00 P.M.
The special council meeting most likely after the public hearing. And throw in a finding.
The public hearing is seven. It should be fairly short. Have we scheduled a special finance committee meeting? Because we have a request of legislation. We'll need to have a special committee.
That's what we were talking about. It's right after that. We have a public hearing at 7:00. Then we could do a finance meeting next night too. For the other, for the other item. We'll get the schedule out. Everybody will need to know if I...
Do you know the order for those?
I'll get that out tomorrow.
Okay.
We'll have it created on Monday.
Okay.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I can't see a public participation. Do you already ask for public participation? I make the motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 8:06.